Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manassas Common Council Meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could we have roll call, please?
Alderman Crowe Kramer.
Here.
Alderman Collier.
Good.
Alderman Keenan.
Here.
Alderman Zalinski.
Here.
Alderman Spencer.
Here.
Alderman Benner.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor has been excused.
The first item on the agenda this evening is a public hearing. It's a proposed resolution authorizing public improvements and levying special assessments against benefiting property at Lake Cottage Estates. And Mr. Mantour is here to tell us a little bit about what this is about and what it means to you.
The original, the sanitary sewer, the water main and the storm sewer, along with the curb and gutter was put in on this. It was a private street back in 2004, so those things are already in place. The assessments are for, on the west end of Lake Cottage Court, which has been dedicated to the public, had to relocate some sanitary water main and storm facilities to feed the new lot configurations, as well as the final asphalt pavement has been put in place. The electric service, along with the street lighting, is also put in place. So the assessment hearing tonight is for the relocating of those facilities, the sanitary water main and storm sewer laterals, the final asphalt pavement, the electric service, to include the street lighting and any associated engineering costs.
So with that, is there anyone here this evening that has questions or concerns about the public hearing for the special assessments? If you do, you could step to the microphone and state your name and address. Seeing no one, we'll call the public hearing to a close. The next item is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. And if you would like to comment to the common council, you're free to step forward to the podium. There is a five-minute limit on that, if there is anyone who's interested this evening.
I thought someone else would jump up. Sandra DeBill Taylor, 545 Broad Street. There's a lot on the agenda. I only have five minutes, so I have to talk fast. I'm going to limit my comments to two of the resolutions that pertain to amending two of the TIF districts. I sent an email to most, I think all of you, because there was a public hearing held at the Plan Commission. Unfortunately, my email did not make it in time, so that's why I sent it to you, so my comments at least would be noted. Just for the public's information, one of the TIF districts is required to close in December. That TIF district is, right now, it has a negative $732,000 that either has to be paid up now or paid up later. So this amendment will be borrowing money from one TIF to pay off this TIF in order for it to close with a zero balance. So it's basically, the taxpayers are on the hook either way. Unfortunately, this is the second TIF this year to close. The last one that closed had a total increment paying back to the city of roughly $4,000. That's supposed to be, that was after 30-some years, and I don't know how many dollars were invested. So this is what we kind of call the ugly side of TIFs. Every time they sell you a TIF, they paint a rosy picture of how wonderful they are. This is what happens on the other side of it. I know how the council will vote. I know they're going to pass it, because if they don't, it will have to come out of this year's budget. So instead, it'll get shifted and paid out of another TIF, and a future council will have to deal with it. The second TIF amendment is to allocate roughly $50,000 a year out of positive increment. That means if there's actual tax base generated in excess of what is needed, which we don't really have a good history of that, other than the one TIF that we keep borrowing from, TIF 5, that it would be allocated toward housing within a half-mile radius of the boundaries of that, this TIF district, which is basically near the downtown. For a long time, I've been an advocate for improving the housing, and I've really pushed, well, last year's budget, I really pushed to get an in-house building inspector. My problem is that I'm afraid this $50,000 is really going to go for paying salaries for both the building inspector and community development, because that's just what we're going to do, you know? And my other problem is that there really is no plan, and what is proposed with the new inspector is to make that person wear two hats. They're going to be the building inspector, and they're going to be the housing coordinator. So you're going to have someone, pre-qualifying contractors, setting up a whole program of how to spend these funds, and who's qualified to get these funds, and then that same person as the inspector is going to go ahead and inspect the contractors that they just qualified. To me, it's like the wolf guarding the hen house. I think they should be two separate positions, honestly. I don't, I think it's ripe for problems. And my other big thing, I mean, just simply, is that as much as we want to rehab and improve the housing stock, it starts with code enforcement and getting down and getting things cleaned up, which the building inspector and code enforcement, along with community development, can work on. But community development is so focused on promoting business that a lot of the problems are businesses. So they don't want to lay down the hammer on these businesses, because they want the businesses to remain, you know, be happy, and yet, a lot of times, they're part of the problem with the spot zoning that we have. So it's a catch-22. I don't like that we're taking money out of a TIF district to create a program to benefit some of the residents at taxpayer expense. I don't, I don't think it's a good thing to work with, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Is there anyone else who was just to speak this evening?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Stan Sevenek, 645 Ninth Street, lifelong resident here of the City of Manassas. I wanted to be here earlier, when you were making the decision about the office building, but a personal friend of mine passed away, and I was not able to be here. And even though this has gone by, I still wanted to come here and address this council about this issue. And of course, that's about your choice of a new office building. I want to thank Alderman Zalinski and Alderman Collier during the committee's process. I watch your meetings every evening, or every evening when they're on, on Thursdays, and they were the only two that actually asked any serious questions. It seemed like just a slam dunk from the rest of the committee, or the council, excuse me. You know, why do we have TIFs? And I'm going to kind of address some of the things Sandra had brought up earlier, too, but most of you understand the TIFs are to take care, number one, of blight. And some of you are too young to even know what kind of blight we had down here 30-plus years ago, even 20 years ago. Also, to keep and retain jobs and to create jobs is part of why we have a TIF. And then, of course, the number-one thing, and that's to increase our tax base. And that's what we did with TIF 1. And that's why I am shocked to see that we didn't take a stronger position on not looking or for someone else other than a non-taxing entity to take over this property. Let me remind this council that when this property was first proposed, the assessed value was only around $56,000. And that's the great thing about a TIF. We took an area that was blighted, we took an area that was going to bring jobs into downtown Manassas, and we were going to increase the tax base. That's what it's all about. But then what happens? A non-taxing entity gets it. So that means no more tax dollars. Can you imagine me as a taxpayer, people out there as taxpayers, invested in this for 30, or, well, what was it, 22 years, only to not be able to take that increment and apply it to our taxes so that we could lower our taxes? And you know what? It's not just the city taxpayers. It's also the school district that would have benefited from this. And yes, you know, if I was on the school board, I would also look at this and go, wow, 1.1 million? Not a bad deal. Because today, if you were to build that building, it would probably run you anywhere between $5 and $6 million. Alderman Crowe Kramer did say something during that meeting, and he brought up transparency. And I think he brought that issue up, and he can correct me if he wants to later, because it was the same kind of feedback that I'm getting in the community. This was really under-the-table kind of stuff. I don't know, Mayor, what your role was in this. I think you've known about this a very long time. And if it would have been another TIF, let's just take another TIF, and say a church group bought it, and now we have no taxing authority, that hurts us. And that's why in TIF 13, our last TIF, I proposed that we put in there during the TIF process that it can't be sold to a non-taxing entity. And also, that TIF is different than these other TIFs, and here's why. Because it was a developer-driven. That's how we have to do these. I understand, Mayor, you're looking at possibility of another TIF. Well, let me tell you, if it's going to be like any of the other ones, I wouldn't be in favor of that. Now, some of you might be saying, well, gee, Alderman Sevenek, weren't you, or former Alderman Sevenek, weren't you a part of some of these? Of course I was. But you know what happens? The state legislatures, they change the rules constantly. And you know, sometimes if we just don't follow along, we lose out in the rest of the community. So when an increment was set, and you looked at the payout and how it was supposed to be, and then that building was supposed to be at $3.6 million, or whatever the price tag was, well, then our assessor comes along later on, and he says, now it's worth 1.6. Well, that doesn't help the TIFs, and that's why our TIFs get in trouble. So in the future, Mayor, when we create any new TIF, that we stick to that, and that it's developer-paid, and that they follow the payment schedule so that the right dollars come to the taxpayer, and that's something that can be done through an agreement. Also, too, I guess it's called pay-as-you-go, or pay-go, and that's the other thing that I would be in favor of if you're looking at a future TIF. There's no way that we can have TIFs or TIDs in this community that operate this way when we're taking from one TIF, like TIF 3, or 4, or 5, and putting it into another TIF to support it, and that can't be done anymore. I want to thank this council. I have not been here in about a year, and eight months or so, or seven months. I want to be quiet. I want you to run things. I've been quite happy. I've been watching the meetings. I think the one nice thing about this council is that you've been very civil, and I really like that. And lastly, I'd like to say, we should probably give Debbie off tomorrow. And I want to wish her good luck with the elections. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sevenek. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the report of department head staff and consultants. We have the minutes and the communications. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to receive input on file minutes A through H and communication I through M.
There's a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? I would like to ask the council's pleasure to allow Director Tungate to just tell us a little bit about the award that we received last week, if it'll stand up.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment. Last week, at our Wisconsin Park and Recreation Association conference, we were presented this award of excellence for the Gilbert Site Riverfront Trail. And like any project of this magnitude, it was a team effort, starting with the mayor and common council, engineering department, public works, you know, finance, everybody played a role in this project, and it's a great thing that we got, and I just thought I'd let everybody know. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I was going to ask about letter J. Thank you for that. And also, letter K. If someone could address that.
Attorney Captain, did you want to address that, or did you want me to? Basically, this is, oh, there we go. This is the, basically, the notice that there will be a public hearing for the WPPI refinancing and the buyout of the WPPI lease saleback to the city. So what we're looking at doing in the resolutions, do we already do them this, did we already do that one, or is that on here tonight? That's on here as well tonight. We did that already.
We did that one already.
That's what I was going to say. I think we did that one last week. So we're refinancing the dollar amount through the state trust fund, and we'll be paying off WPPI, saving $2.5 million in interest costs by doing that.
So this communication is just the Public Service Commission's announcement that they're holding a public hearing on the matter?
They'll be looking at that and looking for public comment, as well as discussing it internally. So it's not, it's kind of scary, the way it says notice of investigation.
And that's why I wanted to clear that up for the public, because those are powerful words.
That is the way that they noticed it, that they will be looking at the plan, and they do not see any concerns with it, though.
Thank you for that.
Sure. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. We only have two items on the consent agenda this evening, the minutes to approve from the common council meeting of October 17th, and the Board of Public Works recommendations from October 17th for payment number 5 to Northeast Asphalt for our new street construction and reconstruction program this year, in the amount of $108,225.92. Does anyone wish to have an item separated? Seeing no one, do we have a motion to approve? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to approve consent agenda items number 1 and 2.
There's a motion in a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item I is ordinances and resolutions. The first item is O1716. It's an ordinance approving the attachment of territory to the City of Manassas from the village of Fox Crossing, owned by R. Lewis and R. Lewis LLC. This was on the agenda in a different manner at the last meeting, and I'll have the attorney just briefly comment on it before we move forward on that. Attorney Captain?
The community development director, Mr. Buck, did prepare a memo, which was very good, indicating what has transpired. You will notice that as part of the documents in the packet, there is also a stipulation between the village of Fox Crossing and City of Manassas, which we also would need authority to execute. And what that does is, it ensures that neither party will be prejudiced in any fashion as a result of a detachment and attachment of the parcel. We did go through, and the common council approved an annexation ordinance, and that was as a result of a petition for annexation having come in, and we went through that process, and the common council enacted that. There are two parties, that being the City of Manassas and the village of Fox Crossing, that believe each of them has that particular territory, and there's a question of precedence. And in order to move this forward as quickly as possible, and to get it into the City of Manassas, both of the parties, that being the village of Fox Crossing, and then in my discussions as well, on behalf of the City of Manassas, we figured it was more important to get this accomplished as quickly as possible. This would be the cleanest way to do it. The village of Fox Crossing has already taken action to detach, and so what is before you is an attachment. And along with that attachment petition, then, we would ask for authority to execute the stipulation. You're all aware that we do have a lawsuit that is pending, and that's what the stipulation is meant to do, is to not prejudice any of us as we make arguments in that particular case. If there's any questions, I can answer.
The question, I don't know if I'll ask it right, but we're going to be going to court. We're trying to straighten out some stuff with the Fox Crossing. And I like the numbers and percentages. I'm not worried about the cost, but I'd like to know, you know, opinion, or do we have a chance of winning that, or are we in the lower third? And how long of litigation and stuff do you think this will take?
I don't know if that's really appropriate with this. Did you want to answer, Attorney Captain?
What's pending before you really is an ordinance and not anything on that case. We can put that case on the agenda, on the next agenda. If you want, all that's happened so far is that we have filed the petition, and really what the case involves is that intergovernmental agreement that the village of Fox Crossing and the town of Manassas, they have an agreement, and it covers some of the same territory that the town of Manassas has with the City of Manassas. So they have two agreements, intergovernmental agreements, for the same territory. And so basically, that's what the lawsuit is about. How can they offer the same territory to two different communities, and particularly since the City of Manassas has had its agreement in effect for a much longer period of time? And I forget if it's 1999? No, okay, thank you, 1999. So that's what the lawsuit is about, which is different than, because this territory would be covered under the intergovernmental agreement that we have with the town of Manassas, but in order to resolve just this particular issue, and not having to get into, you know, what came first? Was it the annexation or the ordinance that the village of Fox Crossing enacted? And those are both separate from the agreement. Those are both separate actions. That's what this is about tonight.
Thank you. I'll talk to you later.
Okay.
So this ordinance was only on the agenda one meeting, so we would need a two-thirds vote to suspend the rules first, if you want to take this up this evening, and then we could take action on that. Alderman Nichols?
I do have another question. This Exhibit B, that's attached in our memo from the community development department, this looks that it needs to be signed by both the mayor and the village president. Is that stipulation something that the council would take action on as well, or is it all wrapped into one, along with the ordinance?
It is something that would need to be approved as well, authorized for the mayor to sign, as in approving the ordinance, then, if that could be added onto that, that's what I would be requesting.
Am I understanding that as taking action at the same time?
That's fine.
Or separate actions?
It can be together, yes.
Okay. I do have a question regarding the stipulation, then, between the two entities. At the bottom of the first page, item number 1, and on page 2, item number 3, seem to be conflicting to me, and it could just be the legal language that's conflicting to me. So if you could provide clarification on those two things?
Number 1 is indicating that the document or the process that began first, in order for the detachment and attachment process to be effective, there is an admittance that the village of Fox Crossing ordinance began, or was adopted, prior to the City of Manassas process to annex. That's it. That's all it says. So it just has to do with a legal issue, which is that of what's called prior precedence, which one began first. And paragraph 3 is indicating that even though we are going through this process of detachment and attachment, that we are not admitting that the intergovernmental cooperation agreement and the Fox Crossing ordinance are valid. It's a different issue, or those are different issues.
Okay, so number 1 addresses the timing?
Correct.
And number 3 addresses the validity?
The validity, correct.
Thank you.
There's no other questions at this point. We'd be looking for a motion to suspend the rules and take up, take action on ordinance Alderman Benner?
What is the urgency on it at this point, to be worthy of suspending the rules?
The urgency is the property owners would like to combine those two parcels at, I believe it was the last Plan Commission meeting, and start construction on a project. So to put it off would delay their timeline to begin work on the process. They may have contracts with dates to start those things. This is basically the same thing that we did at the last meeting, accepting that annexation.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules to visit the site.
There's a motion in a second. Think that a motion to suspend the rules is debatable. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 6-1.
So I believe the motion that the attorney is looking for is a motion to approve ordinance O1716 and authorize the city to execute the stipulation. Is there a motion? Alderman Benner?
I can make a motion to approve ordinance O-17-16 relating to 1462 Appleton Road, parcel number 008033701, from the village of Fox Crossing to the City of Manassas. Let's see, was there a stipulation that went with that as part of the motion? No.
If we could include the stipulation, unless you want to have two separate motions.
We can include it, I think.
So then, you'd like to include and authorize the city to execute stipulation Exhibit B?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second to approve ordinance 17 as their discussion.
So with this resolution, the attachment, so do the property owners, they're willing, they're willing to, they're wanting to go with us, the City of Manassas?
They own, yes, representatives here from the prop, I don't know if you're the property owner, you're the representative, but they're requesting this because they own the properties just to the south of that, and they just to the south of that, and they want to combine those properties into one parcel. If you wish to speak, you could this evening.
Are there any future plans? What are, I wasn't at the plan commission, so for that side?
Hi, my name is Garrett Bader. I represent the property owners of the parcels. So much like the mayor said, there are two parcels to the south that we have a contract out on to purchase. This property in question that we already bought earlier this summer, the goal is to combine the three in one jurisdiction for one plan development.
Are there any, what's your future plans for their?
The use we're working on, but nothing that we can disclose yet at this time.
Okay. Are we going to be stepping, thank you by the way, are we going to be stepping on their toes, the village, by pushing this across? Are they willing to, with their agreement, to go forward with it? That?
I thought I turned that off. Attorney Captain?
The Village of Fox Crossing, actually, at the last meeting, we had a representative from the Village of Fox Crossing who came and spoke and did indicate a willingness to go along with this. And they did have two meetings, actually. They had a regular meeting and a special meeting at which they did approve the detachment ordinance and the stipulation.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven, zero.
Item two is Resolution 30, and it's the final resolution authorizing public improvements and levying special assessments against benefiting property owners in Lake Cottage Estates. Do we have a motion? Alderman Correter?
I'll make a motion to approve final resolution R-30-16, authorizing public improvements and levying special assessments against benefited property at Lake Cottage Estates.
So motion in a second? Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven, zero.
Item three is Resolution 3116, and it's approving project plan amendments for tax incremental District Number Five. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
I can make the motion to approve Resolution R-31-16.
So motion in a second? Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Buck, could you summarize what this is all about for the benefit of the public?
Sure. This is a project plan amendment for TID Number Five, and it is basically turning TID Five into a donor TID. So it would amend the project plan to act as a donor and allocate positive increment in the amount of $732,500 to TID Number Three, which would be the recipient district. And that would make TID Three financially solvent, provide increment necessary for its closure at the end of this year, December. I guess to give you some background, TID Five is an industrial use district. It was made in 1998, the end of 1998, and it is a successful TID. It has satisfied its debt service and its project cost obligations. TID Three was a blighted area TID. That, up until about 2006, 2007, was very financially stable. A few things happened in around 2008. We had a large apartment building that went to a nonprofit senior housing and was removed from the tax rule. That removed quite a bit of value out of that district. Another very large project, the main project for that TID, saw a reduction of about a third of its value, lost about a million dollars in value. That also was a pretty heavy hit to the district. Then as well, just the general economic downturn affected some of the values in TID Three. So at that point, it is not financially solvent. So I guess that's the kind of basic breakdown.
Okay, thank you for that. Director Sino, with the funds being, the proposal to don't, for TID Five to be a donor, how does that, what condition is TID Five left in after that?
TID Five, there should be a copy of the evaluation in the packet. TID Five will still be in a positive position, anticipating to close early. Right now, our best indication is 2018.
Thank you. I didn't know it was scheduled that early. So TID Five would be left in a positive position, and we can close TID Three and get those properties back on the regular tax rule? And I support the resolution. Thank you.
Alderman Zalinski?
Thank you. So with TID Number Three, it fell behind after this long. What, are there any other improvements that'll have to be made to it before it closes that we were going to see in the near future that we're not going to have more money that needs to be stuck in there?
Nope. TID Three should be completely closed after it receives its donation. It should close at the end of the year.
Are there anything else coming out of TID Number Five besides the $732,000?
As of right now, there wouldn't be any project costs coming out of TID Five, although it is still an active TID for another five years.
Okay.
So the council could allocate increment out of there, not for project costs, but for possible future donations.
In the past, I've seen that wages and benefits have been sometimes taken out of some of these TIDs.
That wouldn't be coming out of them anymore.
I just think, when we're looking at some of these TIFs in the future, we should be prepared for this, it stinks that we have to, when we're almost blinding the community by doing this switch over and not having it on the tax roll, and eventually, like Sandy Taylor said, that we are focusing on a different council that end up paying for this. I think we should have closed out, I wish we could just close out Number Five, the good TIF, earlier and have it go, that money go straight to the tax roll where people can see the money influencing right away. But we'll have to vote for it just because that's how things go, the $732,000. Thank you.
Alderman Benner?
Mr. Mayor, TIFs are always a struggle for me. I've struggled with them from the time we started doing them till today, because to me, in a lot of ways, it seems like it's corporate welfare in a way, and I struggle with it. But it's a necessary evil for what we have to do in communities in order to help them develop and compete with neighboring communities. Not all of them are successful, and I think, you know, the laws have changed so that you can meet your obligations with those. Thank goodness that they did. In some instances, do it, and other instances, I still struggle with things not being able to just stand on their own for what they are. But at the end of the day, they do allow us to be competitive with other communities. They do allow us to help encourage other folks to build and develop here, and without it, we wouldn't have had the development that we've had. But still, it just kind of burns me a little bit every time we got to do one. I'd rather just do it, pay it off, and move on, but it doesn't always work out that way. And it's just one of those things that we always have to struggle with and work our way through, and they're a necessary evil. And a lot of the things that were set out in the gallery tonight, I agree with, but I don't think really anybody sits up here and takes a lot of this stuff lightly, because it is big money and it is towards our tax roll. And trust me, a lot of this money would look good on our tax rolls so that we could use it, but also reinvesting in the community does pay it back to us in the long haul, and it does improve our community. So you have to do it. It is what it is. They have morphed and changed over the years since it started, and I don't think that they do today what the original spirit and the intent was, but it continues to provide growth for our community that we have to have. So these are tough decisions, but you have to do it to close them out and move forward. So of course, I'll support this. Thank you.
Alderman Collier?
I'm very happy to see the conversation that's coming up. I agree that we got to figure out as a council to help Manassia go forward, and sometimes we make good decisions and sometimes we question our own decisions. But as far as this, if we could pay off some TIFs, I'm for it, but also you got to borrow money to make money nowadays, and sometimes it's a crapshoot the way it looks out there. But I know we're going to make some good decisions, and with the mayor giving some good guidance, we can maybe clip some money and put it to some payment funds, meaning the debt. Thank you.
So tonight, we're really focusing on the dollars and where those dollars are going to come from, and was it successful or not? And Alderman Benner makes some good points that it's difficult sometimes to do these things. We have to remember 20-some years ago what used to be there, including a couple gentlemen's clubs and several bars, and it really gave quite an image to the City of Manassia. And this was, again, one of those things that gave us a completely new image. We saw McCleone and Bonta then in that building, great corporate citizens over the years, and did lots of great things for the community. Then Faith came in, and now is even a bigger corporate citizen in our city. And there were a lot of successful things that happened out of this TIF, and money isn't the only thing that you measure success on. It's one of the things, but it's not the only thing. I think Stan Sevenik made a good point tonight as well, that since I've been a mayor, we've done all of our TIFs as developer finance TIFs, and you only get that money if you perform, so we won't be left in a hole like this at the end if something does change within the economy. And that's important as well. We want to help people be successful businesses, but they should participate in that risk as well. So looking at things from a number of directions, it's good that we continue to do TIFs, but we need to be careful that we're not the only ones taking risk here as well. Further discussion? Seeing none, can we have a roll call vote?
Motion carried on roll call seven, zero.
Item four, we got lots of resolutions tonight, is Resolution 32, and it's approving project plan amendments for TIF District Number 10. Do we have a motion? Alderman Benner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time, I make a motion to approve Resolution R-32-16.
There's a motion in a second? Is there discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Director Buck, could you explain what this is about?
Sure. This is, excuse me, sure, this is a project, a project plan amendment to TID Number 10, and it's basically adding language into the TID project plan that is a typical item in all TID plans. It didn't make it in 10 for some reason, but this would allow the expenditure of funds within a half-mile radius of its boundaries. And what we're proposing to do here is capitalize the City of Manassia Housing Rehabilitation Fund for properties within a half-mile of TID 10 boundaries in the amount of up to $50,000 per year as permitted by available increment. So that increment would have to be there for us to be able to expend it for the housing rehab program. But this would be a way to supply some seed money that doesn't have a lot of the restrictions of our other housing rehab programs. They have things that require income qualifications. And right now, we're running off of a revolving loan fund, but those are block grant rehab programs. This would be a separate seed money to do a housing rehab program that isn't necessarily tied to those block grant regulations.
Thank you for that explanation. And looking at the financing sheet that we have in our packet, where we are today, 2016 to 2017, we're coming into the black, so to speak, with our end-of-year fund balance and this TIF. And then jumping down to 2019, 2020, we see other expenses of about $400,000, which puts that TIF into a deficit area again. So can you, could you explain that blip there? Because that raises a red flag for me at this point.
Sure. The $400,000, well, it's $430,000, but the $400,000 is making the meat of that. That is money that has been potentially allocated for Water Street reconstruction project. I do have a plan, budget, to do a plan for Water Street next year. And then this $400,000 would be sort of a placeholder to do reconstruction of that, and also some of the Taiko Street properties, and sort of reconstruction of that corridor.
Okay, so essentially, right now, that's there as a placeholder?
Correct.
And I see throughout the life of the TIF that we're still expected to come out with a positive balance at the end. So that does make me a little hesitant. At the same time, you're suggesting that this would only happen if funds became available?
Correct.
Within the TIF? And also because it's usually language that's put into TIF plans when they're originated?
Right. Without that language, we would not have the ability to spend it outside of the actual TIF boundaries, even if the increment was there.
Okay.
So by putting that language in, it gives us the ability to do it, and the $50,000 was really just sort of a, would be an ideal amount to put in.
Okay. Thank you for that explanation.
Sure.
Seeing as this TIF boundary sort of weaves its way through the downtown area, a half-mile radius around those areas is a significant portion of the core of our city. So to me, it makes sense to change the language of the TIF along with incorporating the ability to do that into the funds while not exactly committing ourselves to the project yet. But it at least gives us an ability to do so, and therefore, I'll support the resolution.
Alderman Keegan?
Thank you. Mrs. Taylor spoke, having a concern that the money for this would go to salaries, and I'd like for you to address that. But also, after you address that, could you give us some examples of projects that this money might be used to fund in the future?
Sure. Well, from the TID, there would be no additional expenditures on staff salaries than what are not there already. So the $50,000 would be dedicated for a housing rehab program. As you know, we are, well, maybe you don't know, we went through the process of interviewing, and we're hopefully hiring a new building inspector, housing specialist in the very near future. That person would be instrumental in designing a rehab program. Some of the things you would see in a rehab program that you see throughout the state and our neighboring communities, a lot of them are either grants or loans for exterior rehabs, some as simple as matching grants for painting, or deferred payment loans, or lower interest loans, or zero interest loans. But they kind of focus on exterior renovation projects. Another big one that we see a lot is rental conversions. So if you're interested in purchasing a multifamily home or a home that has been split up into multiple units, and you're going to bring that back down to a single family, grants and loans can be provided to cover the costs of those renovations, to change them back, which I believe is a goal of the council, and it's generally a very stabilizing thing for a neighborhood. We can do targeted home overhauls, which is sort of like a rock-the-block kind of situation where you would target problem blocks or even problem properties, and actively try to assist the owners or future owners with rehab of those projects, whether that's exterior or interior. And those can also be grants or loans. And another really big one that is, it's really popular, is a first-time homebuyer loan program or grant program to get some, I said seed money before, but to get some people some down payment money so they can get into a home and make it an owner-occupied home. Those are just some real simple ones that are kind of done throughout the area, and ones that we would be looking at. Obviously, we work with the new housing specialists and how they want to do that. We want to tie this program in as well with our revolving loan fund, which is a community development block grant fund, and our home program funds, which is also a revolving loan fund. They have different stipulations. They have different stipulations with them. But if we can marry those together, also work with private lenders and the business community, try to get matches. So all this, all those kind of programs would be what we would be looking to establish. But without the seed money, there's really not a lot of point to establish those programs to begin with.
So the application for these funds would be probably similar to what we have for the community development block grant, which that's overseen by the housing authority, correct?
Correct.
And off the top of your head, do you know the revolving loan balance right now?
I do not know the balance right now.
But this, would this function in that same way where, so if we gave a low or zero-percent interest loan to somebody, they made the repair, or the improvement, they paid it back, would that money go back into the pot and be available for yet another person?
I anticipate, yeah. For the loan program, that's how that would work. Correct. For a possible grant program, it's usually matching. So, you know, if you give 2,500 to do siding work, and they put in another 2,500, some of those grants are not, you don't pay back.
Not pay back.
But those programs have not been fully flushed out yet. So how they mature, at this point, I'm not exactly sure yet. But I would anticipate it would run just like pretty close to the block grant program. Probably, though, take applications at a set time, because usually, you get more applications than you have funds. Then the housing authority would kind of weed through those and determine which ones are chosen to be funded.
Right. Thank you. I think this is a great idea, and I fully support it. Before we go any further, I think there's one thing that's important to note, that these are all conceptual programs. Whatever we would do would come back to the council for approval. So it's not like Dave is going to choose how this money is spent. You will be choosing how or if it's spent in the future. Alderman Zalinski?
I guess my first question would be, why are we doing, if we're not allocating the funds now, why are we bringing this forward at this point?
Well, we're bringing it forward in case those funds become available. We would have the option to be able to do it. And so we can also program some of that stuff out in the future. If we see the financial statements are looking good, then we can start actively running those programs without having to do the amendment process at that time.
What is the exact reason for funding it this way, instead of going through the budget, through a budgeted item?
These are available funds that could come forward with the increment there. This TID district is in a very good location. I mean, basically, you're looking for a half-mile, you're all the way up to Seventh Street, city limits on the south and the west, and you're going almost all the way over to Manitowoc. So it takes in a very large area, and an area that has need for housing rehab. So, and if the increment is available through that TID, it'd be good to use it for that.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
So we have a long string of borrowing resolutions after this. Items five through nine are borrowing resolutions for the 2016 budget cycle. Items 10 through 16 are items that are refinancing to receive a better interest rate. They don't change the term of the loans, they just save us money on interest rates. So we'll go through them one at a time, at least through number nine, and then we'll, we could potentially do the refinancing ones as a group. So item five, R-3316, do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'll move to approve R-33-16, a resolution approving application to the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands to borrow $1,362,372 from the State Trust Fund, and authorizing the borrowing and the issuance of certificates of indebtedness and levying a tax in connection therewith.
There's a motion, a second. Is there discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
Could you, could someone give me an explanation on what these funds will be used for?
Director Sino?
So there's a memo that's at the front of the packet, of, front of item number five. And for items number five through nine, it individually outlines each of those. So R-33, I'm sorry, yeah, R-33, which is the one you're at, those are the 2016 capital improvement funds. Those were approved through Resolution R-3915, at the same time the budget was approved for the 2016 budget.
So none of these, basically, that we're going through are new projects, per se? They're just basically paying the bills?
This is executing the borrowing for authorizations that the council has already made from November of 2015 up until about three meetings ago. The Valley Road one was the last one on here. So the authorizations to do the borrowing have already been done through the capital budget adjustments or the budget. This is just the execution of the borrowing.
All right. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item six is Resolution 34-16. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'll move to approve Resolution 34-16, the resolution approving application to the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands to borrow $337,000 from the State Trust Fund.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Director Sino, could you review what this one is for, please?
Sure. This one is for the TID 13 improvements, the downtown walkway, curb gutter, a few different ancillary projects that went along with that one. Again, part of the TID 13 project plan, as well as the 2016 budget.
Thank you. And those funds will be repaid through the TID as well?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item seven is Resolution 3516. Is there a motion? You going to make them all?
I guess I'll have the honors tonight. I'll move to approve Resolution 35-16, the resolution approving application to the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands to borrow $478,315 from the State Trust Fund.
There's a motion, a second. Discussion, Alderman Nichols?
I would just like to ask Director Sino to clarify what that one is for.
So this one is a refinancing. It's a new money borrow, because it's a new money borrowing with the State Trust Fund loan. But it is a refinancing in that it refinances the WPPI loan that we discussed back in April. We have been making payments to WPPI on a monthly basis. Approximately $78,000 will be paid throughout 2016. Then, if this passes, it would be refinanced into a State Trust Fund loan at an interest rate of 2.5% rather than the 3% that's currently in place with WPPI.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item eight is Resolution 3616. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'll move to approve Resolution 36-16, the resolution approving application to the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands to borrow $1,159,685 from the State Trust Fund.
There's a motion, a second. Is there discussion? Director Sino?
This one is related to the deferred special assessments that the council approved. There are two of those. The first one is the Vans Development Agreement. The timing of that one is not certain. However, we do want to put this resolution in place, so that if it becomes necessary, it would get implemented immediately. I am working with the State Trust Fund staff to make sure that if we don't take the money now, the transfer over to next year's borrowing will be achievable. And then, the second one is the Woodland Development Agreement with Mr. Hagens for $408,000.
Is there any further discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. And Director Sino, those will be, once borrowed, repaid through special assessments?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item nine is Resolution 3716. Do we have a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to approve Resolution 37-16, the resolution approving application to the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands to borrow $343,200 from the State Trust Fund.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Director Sino?
This borrowing is for the 867 Valley Road project. This also is a timing issue, in that as long as everything goes okay with the cleanup and the transfer to the developers, part of the agreement, this would be a timing issue only. This is a short loan, a two-year loan, because we're anticipating it'll be closed off that fast, and it would be paid off between the grant that is in line for DNR, as well as the development agreement, where the developer would purchase the land.
Is there any further discussion? Alderman Zalinski?
How is that coming along?
It's actually coming along great. If you drive out there, the building is coming down. Asbestos and lead have been removed from the site. So it, I don't know the exact dates, but it's going as planned, yeah, better than planned, actually.
Better than planned. Okay. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
So items 10 through 19 are refinancings. The attorney has given me permission to allow you to look at them as a group, if you'd like, or you could do them individually. It's the council's pleasure, and I'll look for a motion. Alderman Nichols?
Do we need to add up the totals, or take the amounts one at a time?
I would list the amounts one at a time.
Okay.
And if you'd like to, we could start with Director Sino telling us what they are, if you'd like to do that first.
I'll let her do that, and then I'll make the motion.
So all of the resolutions 10 through 19 added up equal 14.27 million. And these are existing loans that the city has on its books for a number of purposes, a lot of TID purposes, some general fund purposes. There's some steam plant debt, public works, land purchases, et cetera. In the memo, it explains each loan, where it is, and where it will go as far as interest rates. This is being done for interest rates savings only. There will be no extension of any of the payments for years added on to the loans. The approximate savings is $541,000 over the remaining years of these loans. There is one loan, which is the first one, the $3,039,000. That was an 11-year. It had 11 years left to pay back. However, because of the big interest rate difference, it's a half a point on $3 million over that time. So we reduce that down to a 10-year loan, still manageable payments for three different TID purposes. Other than that, all the schedules are staying the same.
Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Thank you for that summary. I'll move to approve Resolution 38-16 for borrowing in the amount of $3,039,114. Resolution 39-16 for borrowing in the amount of $3,2187.13. Resolution 40-16 for borrowing in the amount of $680,195.13. Resolution 41-16 in the amount of $1,989,000. Resolution 42-16 in the amount of $1,480,000. Resolution 43-16 in the amount of $820,500. Resolution 44-16 in the amount of $763,441.58. This is approving application to the Board of Commissioners of Public Lands to borrow those funds from the State Trust Fund, and authorizing the borrowing and the issuance of certificates of indebtedness and levying tax in connection therewith.
Did you want to include 17, 18, and 19 on the next page?
I'm sorry, I forgot to turn the page.
I missed them the first time, too.
R-45-16 in the amount of $882,200. R-46-16 in the amount of $875,000. And R-47-16 in the amount of $738,820.80.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any, does anyone wish to have any of these separated from the group, or is there any discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Just to clarify once more, Director Sino, these are all refinancing of current debt.
Correct.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who wishes to separate any, or is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item J is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for the term of October 20th through November 3rd, 2016. Is there a motion? Since you're on a roll, Becky?
I'll move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of October 20th through November 3rd, 2016, in the amount of $1,751,643.28.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
Item two is the beverage operators license applications for 2015 through 2017. And if we could start out with those that are recommended for approval at this time? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2015 through 2017 licensing period, as listed under approved in the police department's memo dated November 2nd, 2016.
There's a motion, a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call seven zero.
We do have two licenses that were not recommended for approval. Ms. Wilts or Ms. Roper are you here this evening? If you'd like to speak before the council, you're welcome to do that this time. Do we have unanimous consent to hear from her?
I didn't realize this was about what the council's like, so I'm a little nervous. I did get underages when, back then, I had a few...
Can we get your name to start out with?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry.
My name is Ashley Wills. I am a key holder at Dollar General, and one of the requirements for being a key holder is to have your liquor license. And I was a key, I became a key holder pretty early when I first started my job. I didn't realize that mistakes that I made, like, back in the day, would really, like, affect my future. But I really hope that I can get this, because it helps me a lot. Because being a key holder, I get paid more, and I get more hours. And right now, all I'm trying to do is just pay off my fines and get my license. And then, I'm hoping that also getting the liquor license, I could become a bartender and get extra money, so I can go to college and just support myself and my family. And thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone on the council have any questions for Ms. Wilts? Alderman, call here.
I noticed that you were just very young. You are young, sorry. But you must have had a few drinks here and there, had a little fun. And now, you're just, you're working, you're trying to establish yourself, and you've got to have the license for your primary job. But then also, you would like to get a license to go out and bartend in public. And you're telling me that, well, you're responsible enough, because you came here to, at least plead and talk to us. I realize that the police department does a good job, and they screen people. And I, I think you should get a second chance, but you've got to understand that they have rules, and it's going to... and it's gonna be tough for bartending. I hope your past don't come back and affect you. So I hope you get the council to agree with this, and I hope you can keep your first job and good luck in going to school. Thank you.
Alderman Solinsky?
Could I get your age? It didn't show up on here.
I don't know that...
Oh, you can't? You can't ask the age?
That's when you can say you're old.
So you look very young, and I don't want to discriminate you on your age or anything, but, because I've been discriminated on my age being up here. But I just hope that if you do become a bartender in the future, if we do give you your approval, that you might have friends that are younger than you or at your age, that you don't put them down the road that you went down. And I don't like to see all these offenses, but I just hope you're on the straight path now. Thank you.
Alderman Keegan?
Thank you. Chief, in the memo, the lieutenant, he notes that, it says additionally, you failed to disclose the three juvenile alcohol offenses on your application. Are these three that are included in the four that are mentioned, or are we talking a total of seven offenses?
Those are included in the earlier numbers. The thing that the city attorney and I were just discussing is I don't know that we've really looked at juvenile alcohol offenses in the past, and with Lieutenant Bonneville taking over Bouchard, who had done it for umpteen years, not sure that that's one that we would really count against her on that. So while it's in that letter, I guess I wouldn't weigh heavily upon that at this point for your decision.
So operating under the pretense that the tabula rota at age 18...
Correct, correct. As it would be a juvenile offense, it would be nothing that would be really disclosed in the public setting, generally speaking.
So if we remove those juvenile offenses, we do then have a pretty clean record.
Without going over, I guess I would defer kind of the city attorney as well on her opinion of it.
So you have one offense outside of the juvenile offenses is what I'm reading on here, is that correct?
Potentially, but if I answer that question, it's more divulging of the person's age.
So if we look and we have one offense, then we don't have the level, it doesn't rise to the level of habitual offender that's defined in our guidelines, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Keegan?
Or Crow Kramer.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Both handsome devils, I get it. That mistake has been made a time or two.
It could've been much worse.
Yes. Ashley, you mentioned one thing that really got my attention, and that was taking on another job to get enough money to go to college. What are your plans for college? Making her get up again.
I was thinking about going to Globe University, becoming a vet tech.
Okay. Thank you very much.
So at this point, we entertain a motion? Alderman Keegan?
I will, because it doesn't rise to the level of habitual offender, I will move to approve the beverage operator license or the bartender license for Ashley Wills.
There's a motion, a second, for the approval of the license for Ashley Wills. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
The chief can help you, Aldous, to what the next steps are. And is Caitlin Roper here as well? No? So do we have a motion regarding the license for Caitlin Roper? Alderman Keegan?
I will move to deny the beverage operator license for Caitlin Roper. Is there a second? So motion, a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item three, you'll notice that we moved things around a little bit tonight so that this certified survey map was after the ordinance earlier in the agenda. There's a certified survey map for the Appleton Road Lot Combination as recommended by the Plan Commission. Do we have a motion? Alderman Keegan?
Thank you. I'll move to approve the certified survey map for Appleton Road Lot Combination as recommended by the Plan Commission.
So motion, a second. Do we have any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 7-0.
Item L is appointments. Unfortunately, I have some bad news this evening. Mr. Jean has rescinded his offer to join the City of Manassia at this time, so we will not be taking action on that item this evening. The next step would be to get the committee back together, hopefully in the next day or two, discuss our options with the remaining candidates, or if we want to open the process again. But unfortunately, we heard from him this morning that he was going to rescind that offer of employment at this point. Item N is public comments on any matter listed on the agenda. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak at this point?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. My 22 years up here, I've never seen so many resolutions changing financing, and I did go through them on the internet, and Peggy was a very good help this morning when I called her. But I think the public would like to know what the city is going to now save by doing this refinancing. You know, that's important, and they need to know that you did a good job this evening, and, you know, you're helping out the taxpayer here. That's important. And thank goodness that the City of Manassia has this opportunity to do this with the State Trust Fund, because if we didn't have this, the city would be, we probably wouldn't even have a police department. We may not have a fire department. We'd have skeleton crews. So I always like to remind the community, too, that I wasn't on the council during the steam utility, but that's where it happened. And I have to say, Mayor, you've been doing a good job when it comes to keeping our head above water here with this particular issue, because it could've been the other way around. And I don't know if Debbie, excuse me, if Peggy's able to provide that dollar amount, but I think the community would be very interested. Thank you.
And I think we did mention that earlier, but just to say it again, it was $541,000, more or less. So it was very significant savings in interest. Seeing no one else for the public portion, do we have a motion to recess to committees at this point? Alderman Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I make a motion to recess to committees.
So motion, a second. We stand at recess. Thank you.